Rinko, do we have any more agendas?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Very full house. Glad you're all so excited to be here for the last meeting of the year. So hereby call to order the King George County School Board Regular Meeting. So at this time, we'll be led in the pledge by the officers of the Sealston Roar Squad. So please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. Pick it away. All right, please be seated. Although Roar Squad, would you like to take this opportunity to introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about your roaring, I guess?
You can lower that.
So these three up here are actually our tiny examples that were elected by the Roar Squad to be officials and representatives of the school. We have our captain and our lieutenant and our sergeant.
All right, thank you. All right, well, thank you all. It's great to hear about the Roar Squad. Okay, at this time, we will have Ms. Higgins tell us about our holiday card winners this year.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the School Board. Look at this. All right. Thank you so much for the opportunity tonight to come before you and honor our holiday card winners. Each year, you may recall, our School Division hosts a Holiday Art Card Contest for the students throughout our division. And our art teachers work very hard and well with our students to help collect these beautiful pieces of artwork, and this year is no exception. We have two very talented artists, and their art, as you see on the screen, has been selected to represent our Holiday Art Card, and we are excited tonight to recognize those students. First is Bethany from King George Middle School. Bethany, if you'd come forward. You want to stand right up here? We'll do a picture. And next, we have Emma Rose Wood from King George High School.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins, and congratulations, Bethany and Emma, for having your cards selected. Those are always a joy to receive, so excellent job. All right, next, we have Mrs. Strauss, who's going to tell us about the District Leadership Conference this year.
That thing's not secure in there.
Yeah, I think Ms. Higgins, like, fell into the podium.
Joining me today is my co-advisor, A.J. Addison. He's going to assist with the presentation of certificates this evening. And I just wanted to thank you all for allowing us to come and share this with you and with our audience so that everyone can recognize these wonderful students. On November 16th, 2021, at the Spotsylvania Town Center, all of the active high school DECA chapters in District 19 competed in the DECA District Leadership Conference. The schools that participated in the event were Brookpoint, Colonial Forge, Mountain View, King George, Caroline, Brand New Chapter, Colgan, Garfield, and Manassas Park High Schools. This conference competition consisted of 22 events, including fundamental, principal, and individual series events that students sign up for, test prior to, and participate in role plays at the district level. Top, first, second, and third place overall winners move on to the State Leadership Conference in Virginia Beach on March 4th through 6th, 2022. We are also excited to have the Virginia DECA State Officers. Vice President of Leadership Troy Spillman was at this event, along with Region III Vice President Lily Sinkus from Riverbend. She participated in our event. And then Alina Puentez, the District 19 President, was there to make all of the awards presentations. And she is also a King George High School student. King George DECA was fired up as these students maximized their momentum and were winners in the following events. In the Virginia-only fundamental events, Casia Conboy earned second place in job interview and earned proficiency. Kimora White earned first place in job interview and earned proficiency.
Ms. Strauss, sorry. Could we have the recipients line up and we'll get a picture?
Okay, you guys get to line up in the front. Move on forward, and you hold up your certificates up there, okay?
You can just line up up here in front of them.
Circle right around and face me. Carson Dees, second place in selling and earned proficiency. Nevea Gardner, third place in social media. Leah Paz, second place in social media. Emma Taman, first place and earned proficiency in social media. So all of these freshman winners move on to the State Leadership Conference. In the principal events, Ava Krieverling, Principles of Marketing, third place in tests, third place overall winner and earned proficiency, moving on to the State Leadership Conference. Amira Tate, Principles of Hospitality and Tourism, first place in role play, second place overall winner and earned proficiency, moving on to the State Leadership Conference. In the individual series events, Caitlin Wingert, Business, Finance, Marketing, second place test, second place role play, second place overall winner and earned proficiency, moving on to the State Leadership Conference. Drew Water, Hotel and Lodging Management, second place in test, first place in role play, first place overall winner and earned proficiency, moving to the State Leadership Conference. Kiera Graves, Hotel and Lodging Management, second place role play, second place overall winner and earned proficiency, moving on to the State Leadership Conference. Okay. Madeline Winfrey, Communication, Marketing Communications, second place test and earned proficiency. Acadia Conboy, Marketing Communications, third place role play, third place overall winner and earned proficiency, moving on to the State Leadership Conference. Catherine Bennett, Quick Serve Restaurant Management, third place in role play and earned proficiency. Adely Pelto, Quick Serve Restaurant Management, first place test, first place role play, first place overall winner and earned proficiency, moving on to the State Leadership Conference. Rex Wang, Restaurant and Food Service Management, second place in test and earned proficiency. Kenneth Chan, Restaurant and Food Service Management, first place in test, first place overall winner and earned proficiency, moving on to the State Leadership Conference. Samantha Tipton, Restaurant and Food Service Management, second place in role play, second place overall winner and earned proficiency, moving on to the State Leadership Conference. Amy Pache, Retail Merchandising, third place in test, third place in role play, second place overall winner and earned proficiency, moving on to the State Leadership Conference. Caitlin Matthews, Sports and Entertainment Marketing, third place in test and earned proficiency. Kyla O'Keefe, Sports and Entertainment Marketing, third place in role play and earned proficiency. Tyler Trusslow, Sports and Entertainment Marketing, second place in test, second place in role play, first place overall winner and earned proficiency, moving to the State Leadership Conference. Also earning proficiency certificates, and I've mentioned this and not clarified what proficiency means, if they average a 70 or better between test, role plays, et cetera, then they earn proficiency. So these students earn proficiency in the Human Resource Management Event. Emma Filkowski, Riley. Karina Wilson and Eileen Miller. Okay, didn't have those in the order I thought. Karina Wilson, okay, there we go. Then earning proficiency in Hotel and Lodging Management was Gavin Patterson. Jessica Nestor, Mason Nicoletti. And let's see, Ella Gardner. Ella Gardner earned proficiency in her event, and finally Javier Smith in Principles of Hospitality and Tourism earned his proficiency. Now, King George DECA members that placed first, second, and third overall are headed to that DECA State Leadership Conference. Along with these overall King George winners, there are other members that are competing at the state level in these events. Graham Patterson and Isabella Hussin are participating in the Business Law and Ethics Team Decision Making Event. Caitlin Matthews and Shanara Johnson are competing in the Sports and Entertainment Team Decision Making Event. Catherine Bennett and Lindsay Spillman are competing in the Community Giving Project. Ella Gardner and Kyla O'Keefe are competing in the Hotel and Lodging Decision Making Event. Adri Minero and Kennedy Bird are competing in the Buying and Merchandising Team Decision Making Event. Kendall Morgan and Hannah Linder are also competing in Buying and Merchandising Team Decision Event. Natalie Pelto and Jessica Nestor are competing in the Business Services Operations Research Project. Troy Spillman, your board representative, student rep, and Rex Wang are competing in the Business Law, Ethics, and Team Decision Making Event. And Samantha Tipton and Alina Puentez are competing in the School-Based Enterprise Project. Any students or teams who place top eighth or ninth, depending on the event, at the state level, will move on to the International Career Development Conference in Atlanta on April 22nd. We would like to thank the King George High School staff and admin team for their continued support of this program and King George DECA. We would also like to thank current and retired School Board staff and Dr. Benson for your support and help as judges. And we would like to thank you, our School Board, for your support. With a special shout out to TC Collins for his longtime support as a DECA parent and board member, and I saw your lovely wife come in too, so her as well. Thank you all so very much for giving us this opportunity. Oh, but wait, there's one more thing. We would also like to recognize students' achievement for the DECA Power Trip to Boston on November 19th and 20th. Those students competed and participated in this activity, and they earned a certificate for participation. That would be Catherine Bennett, Jessica Nestor, Alina Puentez, Lindsay Spillman, Troy Spillman. You want to come down here? Oh, there's me. I'll put that aside. Amira Tate. Samantha Tipton. Tyler Trusslow and Drew Water. And special note about Drew, he was recognized onstage as an award winner for the competition that they all participated in. So I'm very proud of all their hard work, and I'm looking forward. I know Mr. Addison and I are looking so forward to traveling to Virginia Beach with all of you and seeing you win up on that stage, and us going to Atlanta in April. So thank you all for being here. Oh, and for Power Trip, we were the only school from Virginia that went to Boston that weekend. So our kids that went got to hang with the Virginia DECA officer team, which was a lot of fun doing that. So, did you get a picture? Oh, yes, we sure will.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss, and thank you to all the DECA members here this evening. Congratulations. I think next time, we need a bigger boardroom for all of you recipients to line up in. Okay, at this time, we'll move on to public and employee comments. Ms. Rinko, do we have Yes, thank you. All right, at this time, we'll begin public comment, and so please state your name, address, and limit your comment to three minutes in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. So at this time, Ms. Christine Hill?
Good evening. I am Christine Hill, and I work at the King George County School Board Office, and...
I'm Dee Strauss, and I'm a CTE teacher at King George High School.
So we just wanted to announce that we will have our STEAM Night in March. And so along with STEAM-related activities this year, the CTE classrooms will be open for students and their families to learn more about career and technical education opportunities offered at King George High School. So STEAM Night has traditionally been a hands-on learning night that focused on science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. This year, we're going to incorporate a career and technical education piece to our STEAM Night. Typically, we have lots of elementary students and some middle school students attend our STEAM Night, and we thought it would be a great way for our students and our families to be exposed to some of the things that are waiting for them when they get to high school. And it would enable our families to see the career and technical education classrooms that often are shut off from our STEAM Night area. And so what I wanted to do was just announce that STEAM Night would be March 10th this year. It's located at King George High School from 4:30 to 7:00. And so at 4:30 until 5:30, we'll offer a free dinner, and then from... Yes, free. And then from 5:00 to 7:00, we'll have STEAM activities, a makerspace area, demonstrations, information tables, and new this year, we will have an Explore Career and Technical Education programs related to STEAM especially. So teachers can earn professional development points, and staff will also have some other free things for participating, since it is a long evening for everyone. And online, right now, at the Division website, and this will also be posted on the school websites, is a place for community members to sign up to participate if they would like to have a table and participate in a STEAM activity, or when I say participate, offer a STEAM activity for our students. And there's also a donation web area as well, donation of materials and things like that. So that is online, and we look forward to anybody who wants to come out for that. It's usually a really great event. As a matter of fact, the last in-person event we had was on March 12th, and school shut down on March 13th. So we still had our STEAM Night this past year, but it was online, so people had to log in through their computer. So it's much more fun, I think, when you can do the hands-on with your friends and with your community members. Did you want to talk anything about CTE?
I think the inclusion of CTE into STEAM Night is going to give the children and parents that connection between what those hands-on things we do within the CTE classrooms, connecting that with math and science, technology, arts, and engineering especially, because with the drafting, that takes you right through that, the carpentry work that we do, the marketing, the CIS program, the television program that we have. Oh, and nurse aid, of course, with all of that. So I think it's a great addition, so we're looking very forward to that.
Okay.
Thank you. I just want to also say, from the Instruction Department and from myself, thank you to Mr. Collins, thank you to Ms. Pansera for your service on the board. Since I have the microphone, I wanted to make sure to say that, because our whole team is very appreciative of your time and efforts on the board.
All right. Thank you both. All right, next, we have Brian Greegan.
Brian Greegan, 9485 Elm Court, King George, Virginia. And I'm not here to talk about masks tonight, so you can calm down. I'm just here to thank Gina Pansiera and TC Collins for your service to the community, and especially your support, your unwavering support of in-person education last school year. You really fought and tried hard to get kids back in the buildings, and that meant a lot to myself and a lot of other parents. And I also appreciate the fight for the children's, the parents having the health decisions for their children. That meant a lot to myself and a lot of parents as well. That's all I'm here for. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you, Mr. Greegan. Mr. Mans, do we have anyone online? No. Okay. All right, so at this time, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Madam Chair.
All right. Next, we have the consent agenda. So this evening, we have hard copies. They have been updated of the October 25th, 2021 Regular Meeting, November 8th, 2021 Regular Meeting, and November 29th, 2021 Special Meeting. There were a few, I think, just minor typographical errors edited and updated in those. So at this point in time, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda for the minutes of October 21st, I'm sorry, 25th, November 8th, and November 29th of 2020.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Sure about time. Motion carries. Moving on to our action item this evening. Dr. Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last meeting for discussion, calendars were presented to the board for your consideration. These calendars were based on the work of the committee that brought forth, again, recommended calendars for the 22, 23, and 23, 24 school years. So I know Ms. Hill is here, and she led that effort, and I appreciate her help with that, as do I appreciate the effort of all the committee members. But recommendation for the board is to adopt the calendars as presented. Any questions you have, we'll be happy to answer.
Are there any questions for Dr. Benson? If not, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to consider, or actually to approve, the King George County School Calendar 2022, 2023, 2023, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sure about's aye. Motion carries. Next, we have our discussion items this evening. So first, we have the SEAC Committee Appointment.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, this is just a recommendation to add a member to the SEAC, or the Special Ed Advisory Committee. This is a board advisory committee. The board then approves all recommended appointments, but we ask that you consider and ultimately approve that Dr. Meg Knights to be part of the SEAC Committee for the current school year.
All right, thank you, Dr. Benson. Do any of my fellow board members have any questions about the SEAC Committee Appointment? No? All right. So Dr. Benson is considering, this is our last meeting of the year, do you need a motion to approve that this evening, or you want to wait until January?
It's the pleasure of the board. I mean, I don't, it's up to you all. If you want to wait until January, you can, but if it's okay, then it'd be great to have her approved and onboard this evening. But again, it's the prerogative of the board.
Okay. I would be fine approving that this evening. Would any of my colleagues like to make a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to accept Dr. Meg Nice as being appointed to the SEAC Committee.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. And next, Dr. Benson, we have the SRS III Acceptance.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is just a procedural motion that we need the board to consider, so that the county finance office can set up a, an account code to account for expenditures out of the SRS III funds. So as you know, King George County Schools, along with all school divisions in Virginia, were awarded grant funding of various amounts through the SRS III distribution. Again, this is just the need for an approved motion to accept the $3,79,990 in SRS III funds, that the county can set up an account code from which then, in the future, they will, they will use to pay bills, or use to pay the bills for expenditures out of the SRS III fund. So we appreciate your consideration with this one. This one, if you would consider tonight, that would be helpful, since the county can then set that account code up, and we're ready to go the beginning of the year. But again, you're simply accepting the $3 million, so they can set up those charge codes.
Thank you, Dr. Benson. Is there any discussion? Would anyone like to make a motion to accept the SRS III funds?
Discussion item, so usually it's discussion then action for next meeting.
Understood.
So I would, I would prefer to have the, my successor accept that.
I think Dr. Benson mentioned that it would make the process goes more smoothly to do at this time.
It would, it would simply give us, give the county, you know, lead time to set up those account codes, so that if we have bills to pay, then we can pay them in a timely manner. That's all. But yes, it would. But again, I recognize the prerogative of the board.
So I will move to accept, after consideration of the circumstances, to accept the ESER funds at this meeting.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I'm sorry, Mr. Collins, did you vote aye?
I did.
Okay. Sorry, thank you. All right, motion carries. All right, at this time, we will have our information items, beginning with our committee reports this evening. Ms. Pansera, do you have any committee reports?
I do not.
Okay, Ms. Hawk?
Yes, I attended virtually the Chesapeake Bay Governor's School meeting way back on November 11th, and it was a very productive, lengthy meeting, but covered a lot of information. And what I'd like to do is enter the minutes, the agenda and the minutes into our committee minutes, our meeting minutes tonight, so that it will be available to the public, if that's appropriate to do. The agenda included the financial report and the budget calendar, of course, but it included a strategic plan update for the Chesapeake Bay Governor's School that is very interesting and very well done. It also includes information about the consideration of the racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic makeup of the applicants within the government, the Chesapeake Bay Governor's School by percentages, and that is noted in the packet. The, and just by virtue of comment, at this point in time, the King George student makeup is 33% black, not of Hispanic origin, 67% white, not of Hispanic origin, and 17% economically disadvantaged. There are other breakdowns, but they're entered in the packet if anyone would like to see them. It's a wonderful program. They're working with great diligence to expand the diversity of the students, as well as the faculty. And the programs are not only fascinating, but so focused on what today's needs are, the environment and the impact that students can have on the environment. One of the exciting things that they have coming up is a field trip to Costa Rica, and the information is in here as well. And I don't have a date on that, but if anybody's interested, they can look it up. Oh, here it is. The Costa Rica is a sea turtle ecology trip, and will be nine days in length and focus on sea turtle biology, rainforest ecology, and conservation. An exciting, exciting place to be and things to do. So the Governor's School, Chesapeake Bay Governor's School, is such an opportunity for our students. So I'm very pleased to represent it.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hawk. Dr. Cutright, do you have any committee reports?
No report at this time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Collins?
No reports.
All right, and I do not have any reports, but I will be attending the Title I Advisory and Technology Committee, Technology Advisory Committees next week before the holidays. So I'm looking forward to those kicking back off. All right, so Dr. Benson, do you have a superintendent's report for us?
I do, thank you, Madam Chair. I want to take a moment. We've already had a staff member and a citizen recognize these two individuals, but on behalf of our school division, I too want to recognize and thank both Ms. Pansera and Mr. Collins for their dedication. And their many years of time, you know, publicly you see them here at meetings, but privately you don't see the hours and hours they spend responding to constituents, listening, understanding issues, gaining clarification, so that they can make informed decisions. And I think most recent times are like no other times, and I just want to express my appreciation to both of you for your, again, your service to our community, being board members, Ms. Pansera for the last four years, and for Mr. Collins since 2014. We have plaques for each of you to express our gratitude, and I'll read very quickly. They both, with one exception, say the same thing, but these are presented to both of you with sincere appreciation for your service as member, and in Ms. Pansera's case, as chairwoman, and in Mr. Collins' case, as chairman of the King George County School Board during your tenure. We thank both of you sincerely, and we wish you well in your future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Pansera. Mr. Collins?
Sure.
Get out of the way. You're not that old yet.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Benson. All right. And for our last item of our public meeting here this evening, our board comments. So Mr. Spillman.
Hi. So going on right now, King George High School, we've got all of our sort of finals-type things, all the SOLs are coming up in this week, and then beginning of next week, everyone's kind of wrapping up everything they've got to finish up for this first semester of classes. And I know that we are all very excited to get into winter break and then start fresh with our new set of classes. So all of our winter sports have started up. Those are very exciting. Basketball team is doing pretty well. And then girls' basketball is struggling a little bit, but they'll be all right. And then the track team had our first meet this past Saturday, and I think the swim team is starting up this Friday, as they have their first meet. So lots of good things going on.
All right, thank you, Troy, as always. Great to have you here. Ms. Pansera.
Thank you. So I wanted to prepare something in writing, but then every time I sat down, I just kind of decided that I would just kind of speak from the heart. And first, I just want to thank all of my constituents and all my supporters for the faith and the confidence they've had in me in the last four years. It has not been an easy four years. It even started out a little rocky, but I've learned a lot about our community, and I have to say that we have some fabulous teachers, some fabulous staff members, and some exceptional students. One of the reasons that I did want to be a part of the school board is I'm compassionate about our kids here in this county. I run two businesses, and I also worked on base, and the children are our future. And I'm getting a little choked up here, sorry. And, you know, I just wanted to try to do anything and everything that I could to give them as many opportunities that could be afforded to them here in our community, being that we are such a small community. And one of the things that I have been compassionate about is the CTE program, and we have some exceptional teachers. Out of the gate, I was real gung-ho, and we did, were able to get a subcommittee and get that started, and we visited other schools, and we were kind of going down that track of possibly expanding our CTE program. And then COVID hit, and we came to a screeching halt across the board, which brought on even more challenges, and what do you hear to be chairman, chairwoman? There was no doubt, there was a lot of challenges, but, you know, even though there was quite a bit of divisiveness between the board members, I think that, you know, we did the best we could for our community in representing, you know, the kids and teachers and the staff members. I do want to thank my fellow board members for putting up with all of the chaos that we kind of had here on the, on the bench and also behind the scenes. You know, even though we had our moments of divisiveness, I think that there was a level of respect, even though sometimes that may have been questioned, that we had for each other, and we got through it. Oddly enough, I don't know, but in the last three or four months, I feel like we've accomplished more than we have. We've gelled a little bit more, and I'm very appreciative of that. So I don't feel that my time is actually up. I didn't run again for the sole purpose of, you know, I had a lot going on in my personal life this last year. So instead of saying goodbye, farewell, I will say until next time. I do plan on serving, continuing to serve my community and the children here at King George. So thank you guys very much for all the opportunity. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Ms. Pansera. Ms. Hawk?
Yes, and I guess I can follow up. We have to say that, thank you. Thank you to our tech guys who keep me on track, but also to Ms. Pansera, whom I have grown to know and respect and have such a good friendship with, and I'm, I'm the benef, I'm the person who benefits the most from that, because she has, she's brought a lot of depth to our board and to our community, and I'm happy that she's going to continue in whatever way is available. Mr. Collins, you know, I've known Mr. Collins for a lot of years, even though he's not quite as old as I am, but he has served his community in so many ways, both through law enforcement, dedicated and long career, being an active parent, and in so many ways, the real, the real underpinning of a community. And I want to say thank you, Mr. Collins, because you've done so much more than any of us ever know. A quick note to all staff members, I think everyone got a survey or the link to the survey for the budget priorities, and I'm really asking people to take time to look at the survey and to give your input. We need to hear from every single person in whatever role you play. We need to know what your needs are, what, what you see as perhaps a priority. We really need everyone to complete this survey, because we are better planning, we do better planning with better information from the people who are in the trenches. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hawk. Dr. Cutright?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank the holiday contest winners, Bethany Madison and Emma Wood, and I might add that I'm going to use that electronic holiday card to send to family and friends. So I was very impressed with the holiday card. I'd also like to congratulate Ms. Strauss with her team with DECA, and I might add that it's so important to the economic development of King George County to have all of these talented students, CTE and DECA. And last but not least, I want to say the same thing that my colleagues have already said. I appreciate all the work of Ms. Pansera and Mr. Collins. I see the results of your work when I walk into the classrooms and the schools, and I can see the impact that you've really had in the school division. So thank you very much. I know it's already been said, but I'd like to reiterate that again, and I've really enjoyed getting to know the two of you. Recently, I visited Potomac Elementary, and I'd like to give a shout-out to Dr. Brown and to keep up the wonderful work with the PBIS. It's really made a difference with the classroom management and building relationships is really important. As some of you have probably seen on our Facebook page, our school Facebook page, the students all designed rocks at Potomac Elementary, and each student decorated a rock and put it out in the yard. And I thought that was just so cool to see that. Also, I'd like to tell everyone, or like to wish everyone a great holiday and safe holiday, and I hope to see everyone back in 2022, and I'm looking forward to serving you next year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Cutright. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This being my last meeting, I would like to make a few comments. First, I just want to, we all went to the VSBA Conference in November, along with the new members, where it gave an opportunity for some bonding and also some thoughts on what the future will be for King George. I have been humbled to serve everyone in King George, students, the staff, the other members of the board. You know, they say that the Lord puts a purpose in front of you, and then you step out and you have to take action, and that's, that's exactly what happened in the beginning. Someone contacted me to run for the school board, and it wasn't really on my list of things to do, but I knew that the Lord wanted me to do something in my community to make it a better place for our citizens and our children. And I've been so happy to serve for the last eight years. There's a lot of things that have taken place in the last eight years. I've had a good working relationship with my fellow, my board supervisor member, Jeff Bush, where we worked on things such as the middle school expansion, and you just can look around and see what's been done. We've had the opportunity to give staff raises for the last eight years. children. And I've been so happy to serve for the last eight years. There's a lot of things that have taken place in the last eight years. I've had a good working relationship with my fellow, my board supervisor member, Jeff Bush, where we worked on things such as the middle school expansion. And you just can look around and see what's been done. We've had the opportunity to give staff raises for the last eight years. We know that that lagged before that time, and I hope that maybe the board can continue to keep a good handle on the salaries and those financial things. I'd like to thank my fellow board members for your patience, because I know that sometimes I can push the envelope a little bit. So thank you for hanging in there with me. I'd like to thank my wife, Jennifer, who's in the audience when I come home from the meetings or I am online looking at things. And she's quite a calming spirit at home and in the schools. I'd like to thank all the staff members who have worked tirelessly for these students. You have, you know, example after example, you have a couple people in the audience, you have Ms. Strauss, DECA. You know, my children went to DECA, and I am completely impressed with that program. My children, when they went through there, they have gotten great jobs. And I hold it to DECA because of all the interviewing skills. My one child also did the NJRTC with Sergeant Major Frank in the back, who's gave many years of service to this county and have done great things with our youth. Ms. Hill has worked tirelessly. And all the other staff members that aren't here, I'm not forgetting about you in the back there. But, you know, we look at, we look at what goes on in King George. People from all around ask me, what are y'all doing over there? Because they know of the success for our students. You know, Ms. Hawke spoke about the governor's schools. We participate in two governor's schools. We're Fairfax with, I don't know how many, hundreds of thousands of students, only have one. We have so many programs. And if you go to the scholarships, and you'll see the millions of dollars that our students get and what they do. What I'm hoping for is that in the future, we can get some of those students that have done so good in King George to come back to King George instead of going elsewhere, come back home. Both of mine are gone, and they won't come back home, except for Christmas. Just to end things up, I'd like, just a final thank you. It's been a pleasure and a humbling experience to serve, and I can only thank everyone that I see. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. So tough act to follow this night, so I won't even try. But just to repeat much of what my colleagues have shared, Ms. Strauss, as always, it's an honor to know that we're so well represented outside of our county by the King George DECA chapter that you lead. So just, you do an amazing job, so keep it up. Thank you very much. Ms. Hill, I look super forward to the STEAM night. I know my little ones who were much, much younger, two years ago, three, two years ago, really enjoyed STEAM night. So I'm excited that that's going to be back on the agenda, and I know that'll be a great time. Even though it's three months away, I'm looking forward to it. So thank you. As Mr. Collins mentioned, the VSB A conference was, I guess, two weeks ago at this point in time. And that, you know, we missed it last year because it was virtual due to COVID. This past year, it was a great opportunity. I know I attended my first year when I was, when I had just been elected, so I was very new to the board and learning. It's great to go back now with some perspective, pick up new things at sessions, and again, get to know more about my current fellow board members as well as our two new board members. Ms. Pansiera, you were missed, so we're sorry you missed the last event in Williamsburg. But so on that note, I would also just like to extend a sincere thank you to Mr. Collins and Ms. Pansiera. I know the last two years have certainly been challenging, but here we are, but a part of two years later, seemingly having come out on the other side of that. So thank you for all that you've done, serving our board and our community. It's very much appreciated. And on that note, I just want to say thank you to everyone for, you know, persevering through this first semester of the year, and I hope everyone has an enjoyable and restful holiday season. It's certainly well deserved this year. So that's all I have. At this point in time, do we have a motion to go into closed session?
I'll make a motion pursuant to State Code Section 2.2-3711.8.1 for the purpose of discussion, consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, substitute, stipends, terminations, and retirement of employees of the school board.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair, it's aye. We're now in closed session. We're now in closed session. To return to open session.
I'll make a motion to return to open session and certify. Oh, I'm sorry.
Second and certify.
Hold on, she didn't read them.
Yeah. Certify. Where is it?
Gina?
We don't have it on here. Oh, I, I moved to the King George County School Board, return to open session and certify that pursuant to State Code 2.2-3712.D. Only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the public body.
Second and certify.
Certify.
Aye, certify. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are now in open session. Do we have a motion to approve the action resulting from closed session?
Make a, a motion to approve personnel as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are now adjourned.